All right. Good evening, everyone. Tonight is our second, I like to call the meeting to order at six o'clock. Tonight is our second budget workshop for fiscal year 2025. Last week, we reviewed the budgets pertaining to curriculum, special services, and budgets for each of the three schools. And tonight, we will be reviewing technology, transportation, facilities, and grounds capital improvement plan, and the fund balance and town appropriation requests. So to get started, I think we will start off with technology.
Good evening, everyone. I apologize, I'm fighting a cold, so if I cough or whatever, it's just dealing with a cold.
Well, thank you for being here.
Yeah, thanks. So what I will start with, these are kind of the budget highlights that are up there, and I'll kind of review them one by one. The first two are kind of the most budget-heavy items, new items for this budget, and it's replacing all of our wireless access points. So we currently have, we started, it was Arrow Hive, but they got bought out, and it's Extreme Networks. So we have had our wireless access points for about six years now, and we're now past our licensing agreement for support and maintenance ends July 1st. So if we continue with what we have, it will cost us about $20,000 per year for licensing, and it's older equipment, obviously, at this point, because it's six years old. What I'm proposing is replacing all of the wireless access points with Cisco Meraki, which is kind of a better access point, top of the line. And the nice thing about it is it's E-rate eligible. So if we purchase these, we're able to get 40% reimbursement on these devices. So this will obviously eliminate that $20,000 cost that we'll have to start paying, and we'll actually put it into updated infrastructure. So the total cost of those wireless access points is about $178,000. After reimbursement, it will, it'll cost us about $114,000. And these are updated access points to what we have. They're Wi-Fi six, more security, higher throughput, four-by-four technology, they're kind of top of the line. And the second E-rate eligible item is the battery backup unit at our main MDF in the high school. So when we move that switch and our main MDF into the center of the high school, we put a battery backup in that battery backup's now about 12 years old and is in need of replacing batteries. I've gotten two quotes to get the batteries replaced, and replacing the battery costs about $16,000. And obviously, it's still running older technology because it's 12 years old. If we, what I'm proposing is we purchase a brand-new battery backup unit that costs about $18,000, and we're able to get E-rate reimbursement on it, so it would really only cost us $12,000. So it, it seems cost-effective to get newer technology, brand-new hardware with new batteries for $4,000 less than we would pay if we just were to replace the batteries alone. So those are kind of the, the two big items in my budget, but I'll go through the rest. The next one is our laptop cycle. So every year, we try to purchase to, to kind of see the cost and not have one big purchase. Every year, we buy high school teacher laptops one year, the following year, middle school teacher laptops, the following year, elementary school teacher laptops, and the following year is admin support staff. So that is all of central administration. That's your principal and assistant principal, a principal and dean at the school, along with the nurse, the technologist, and also the two secretaries at each school as well. So that's what you'll see, there's 14 at the district level, six at elementary, six at middle, and six at the high school. So that's our cycle for, and I would bring this to you like I normally do in January at the end of Dell's fiscal cycle to get the best pricing and for us to be prepared for the summer. The next one is something that Melissa and I have been working on. So once COVID hit, we needed to get a lot of our special ed forms, our IP documents, meeting minutes, all of those signed electronically. At that time, Power School didn't have a built-in digital signage for their special programs products. So Melissa and I went with a third-party vendor that we've been using up until this point where we're able to get those digital signatures from parents and from teachers for these forms. The issue is it's a little time-intensive because since it's not within the digital, in the special programs application, you have to export the document, import it into this third-party vendor, add in where you want all the signatures, then mail it along, then collect them all, then re-import them into Power School Special Programs if you want a final copy there. Switching to this Power School Special Programs digital signatures will eliminate the need for that. People will be able to sign the documents while they're there in the meetings, and it covers almost all of the documents that Moissa would need. So that is all the stuff at the district level. At the elementary school level, the only real two new things are Typing Club. So the middle school began using Typing Club, and this was a recommendation from our technology integration coach, Vanessa Miller, and we started using it five through eight. But she saw the need that they even need some of this typing reinforcement at the third and fourth grade level. So this year, we piloted it, and they've been using it, and it's been very successful. Not something they do every single day for like hours keyboarding. It's thrown in at the end of the day, 10 or 15 minutes, but they've seen a drastic improvement in the kids' typing. So we'd like to continue that at the third and fourth grade level at the elementary school. And feel free to stop me anytime.
Why do they call it Typing Club and not Key?
It's just the name of the vendor, so that's the name of the company, the website that they use. Yeah, so I think back in the day, what was the old typing program? There, there's a million of them out there. This is one that signed our digital privacy agreement, so they keep all of our, obviously, information private. All the kids are rostered, teachers really don't have to do anything. So the next one is Magic School AI. So you'll see this one at all three schools. Excuse me. You'll see this at all three schools, and this is for teacher use only. It's basically giving an introduction to teachers on how they can use AI to better support students in the classroom as far as resources that they can develop, things that they can do automatically that they don't have to waste time doing on their own. Thank you. Like worksheets, that type of thing. So we've piloted, we're in a pilot right now, actually, and it's going very well. We have a professional development session set up with Magic School AI for April. So teachers have loved it, and it's kind of a one-stop. So it's not them going out and finding resources in all places. It kind of pulls everything together for them. Sorry.
Julio, I know your voice is hurting a little bit.
Yeah.
Just, you know, a couple of the highlights, you don't have to go through every line of them.
Okay.
Okay, is everyone okay with that?
Yeah, okay. Thank you. The next items at the middle school and high school, this was something that I know the high school and middle school principal told you at last time, they'd like to switch from Zello to Naviance, which is the ILP career readiness work-based organization.
So. So I think this is a really nice switch, and Chris talked about this a little bit when he presented. And so it's really the next step in, you know, our college application program. And also, it's part of the secondary regulation. So we really need to have students with those individualized learning plans that follow them from early middle school all the way through high school, helps have interest inventories. You know, I will say, my, my own children took advantage of Naviance in schools not in Narragansett, and it was super helpful. You know, one of the things you, you experience is that it gives you, for example, a window of here are the profiles of students that applied to schools that you're applying to. Here's the ones that were successful, here's the ones that were wait-listed, here's the ones. It doesn't give names, it just kind of gives a, a target range. And so it's really helpful for students to distribute their applications for some reach schools, some kind of reason, you know, some kind of likely schools, and then some safety schools. So I think it'll be really useful for our students.
Is Naviance a product of College Board or ACT?
It is not, actually.
Is it linked to it, though?
But it is, yes. So they, they certainly take that information and, and kind of pull in all the things that are available. College Board kind of has their own. College Board kind of has their own information and has launched some of their own apps. It doesn't really have the user-friendliness yet that, that the guidance department is looking for. And I know Chris has a lot of experience with Naviance and is really feeling good about the, the opportunity and the potential for it.
Yeah, and it was also a discussion that we had with the administrators at both building and the guidance counselors at both building, and they were all on board with it. And the other part of that is it will track work-based learning hours. So as the state makes that a requirement, this is a tool that we can use to track those hours for students. And the last item is, you'll see it at the middle school and the high school, is Smart Pass. The middle school has piloted it and is using it currently this year to track when students leave. You know, it, it creates a digital pass, basically, for them as to where they're going. It can track, it'll track like who's out at the hallway at the same time. If there's like certain offenders that are always in the bathroom at the same time causing issues or whatever, it will track all that report on it. And it's been helpful at the middle school as far as tracking some behavioral issues as well.
Yeah, absolutely. So I want to give, actually, Ryan Kennet, who was our interim dean, really brought this forward. He did a great job with it and piloted it, led the pilot of it at the middle school, and they adopted it. High school will adopt it next year. So students, just on their laptop, can sign in to, you know, go to the restroom or to go to guidance or whatever it might be. The teacher can give permission, and then we know, let's say, for example, we, you know, there are four kids already in the bathroom. You know, the, this program will track that. The teachers can't necessarily communicate with one another over those four classes to say, oh, you know, we have so many kids at the bathroom right now, you can't go, right? And so this program tracks that and says, oh, you know, we can set a limit to say no more than three bathroom passes at the same time. And so we'll say, sorry, you got to wait a little bit, and then it will say, okay, you can go now, because the other students have returned to where they're supposed to be.
So the student initiates asking for a pass to go to?
Wherever it might be.
So if, if, if a class is in session and there's a student missing, does it identify where that student is in the building?
So theoretically, it would say, let's say, for example, the student had a pass to go to guidance, right, from the last class, and they're going to return to their next class. It will say, you know, student is in guidance or student left, right? But it wouldn't, for example, it wouldn't track a student like an air tag or something, right? So it would, you know, but it would tell you the last known place that they would be.
Like a sign-out sheet?
Yes. It, that's a great way to put it, Justin. It really is a sophisticated sign-out sheet.
Could it also be used for like attendance-keeping in classes? Like to say if between classes, a student is running late because they're at their locker and they should be in this next class? Is there a way that a teacher would be able to look up and see who's here today, something like that?
I don't know the answer to that. I would assume so, right? And we do our attendance through Power School. So I think the best way to think about it is it's, it's really a great way to do kind of a aggregated sign-in and sign-out sheet amongst all the, for the full school, so that we know where people are, and we're not having too many students in one place at one time. And it also is able to separate students to say, well, you two shouldn't be together. So, you know, one of you might have to wait a little bit.
And not to go down the rabbit hole, but just one other follow-up question. Would, would students be signing out to use specific restrooms or just to use the restroom at?
That is a great question. We could do that, right? And so you, we have that designated anyway. So there's a 5-6 kind of area of the school and a 7-8 area of the school. So the 7th and 8th graders should never be in that 5-6 bathroom area.
Yep, okay.
The, the other nice thing, I'll speak to one more thing about it, is teachers and support staff can generate a pass, too. So say you have a teach, a student who emailed the guidance counselor and says, I'd really like to meet with you today, can I come right now? The guidance counselor can generate a pass for them at 1:30 when they're available. So the student will get that, the teacher will get notified to that. The student now has that available to the guy, availability of the guidance counselor at a certain time. So those are kind of all of my high-level budget asks. Obviously, the biggest, like I said, are the access points and the battery backup. And, I mean, it, it is a little bit of a price tag because they do come at a total cost of about $180,000, but we will be reimbursed about $70,000 to $75,000 for those purchases. And these two items were discussed at our last District Technology Committee meeting, and that's what the District Technology Committee recommended that we move forward with as well.
Yes, I was just going to bring that up, so.
What was the E-rate percentage reimbursement rate again?
It's 40%, but the work has, the work to file for E-rate and to follow up all the paperwork has become a daunting task. So two years ago, in two years ago's budget, we approved, you all approved us using an E-rate consultant to do this. So the E-rate consultant costs $2,000 per year, and that also covers us for our internet access, which we get 40% reimbursed with. So they, they take, they get, they charge $2,000 per year, and then that will cover you up to $20,000. If you go above $20,000, they will take, I believe it's, it's 8% or 10% of that percent. But it also protects us against audit, it protects us against a lot. And there's a lot of paperwork. It's gotten more and more cumbersome. I did it for probably, Roland did it prior to me, and I did it for four or five years. But then I was literally spending days sometimes doing this, and I just don't have the time or the resources to do that.
And we apply for these E-rates individually, like every time that we make the purchase?
So the way it works is actually in November, it's called a 470. So it's basically, you go out and put this 470 document out, and it's basically a Christmas list. It's like, what would I like? I would like new access points, I'd like new server. You can put like lots of things out there. Servers don't cover it, but any networking stuff, so switches, wireless access points, battery backups, any infrastructure stuff, and you can basically put it out there. And it goes out as an RFP through the federal government. And they come back and you get basically vendor's reply. So we got two vendor replies from this, and we basically, there's a scoring matrix that you have to fill out, and you determine who you're going to purchase from. You make an agreement with them. But even at that point, like right now, we've made an agreement through E-rate to use a certain vendor, and we have pricing for all of our stuff. But say the school committee said, no, we're not going to do this. We're not obligated to buy any of that. Come July is when we can actually buy stuff. And you're not required to, you're just guaranteed that pricing and that reimbursement rate. So I, I've done all of that legwork ahead of time.
Well, and thank you for that. And we, we certainly know how much legwork that you do. I mean, this is a very well-organized budget. Everything is, you know, very easy to follow, and really appreciate all the hard work that went into this and all the work from the District Technology Committee as well. And, you know, it seems that, you know, with a, a number of items on this list that qualify for reimbursement, you know, that's music to our ears. And I just had a question in regards to the licensing. For instance, communication site license costs.
Yep.
Are we looking at annual costs or are these for a certain period of time?
The, these are annual costs. So that, School Messenger, that's our website, that's our communication from Power School. And there's also an app capability to that. But those are all individual yearly costs. And same thing with a lot of our software and any of the individual, like, applications that we use online, third-party vendors, they're all one year. We don't have any contracts that are longer than one year. And that's something Karen and I discussed, because the amount that they give you, like as a reimbursement rate, is not a lot. And then you're tied into three- and five-year contracts where you may not want to use the resource after year one, so you're not tied into that.
And is this, again, I haven't, since being on the District Technology Committee, I have been looked through the strategic plan. Is this like right in line for where we should be? I didn't expect anything less, so.
Yeah, it definitely is. And I mean, obviously, most of this stuff that you're seeing is, the big items are infrastructure, and we want to keep up our infrastructure within, because if you don't, then it's a, it's a huge cost and burden to replace it all when it's completely outdated and non-functional.
And I also know we were very proactive with security in the last couple of years, so.
Yeah, that, that still continues, as you can see in like my budget highlights. Six or seven of those top ones at the district level all have to do with multi-factor authentication, you know, organizations that we belong to for threats, phishing emails, all of that's still there.
Excellent. Does anyone else on the committee have any other questions?
Just, supply chains have been a really concern, but since everything's working, this is not like a big concern for us.
Yeah, it's not. And, and the way we've planned things out, like we've already gotten the items that you approved in January, we've gotten most of those in already, so we're in good shape with that. And as far as this network stuff, that's why we're hoping, even with E-rate, we can get this ordered on July 1, get it by the second week, I mean, yeah, July 1, get it by the second week of July, and then have six weeks to get it all installed and working prior to the beginning of school.
Fantastic. Thank you.
I'd also add that one thing that I have always been particularly impressed about is how forward-thinking you are when it comes to creating a budget. One particular example is, you know, when you come to us in January at the end of Dell's fiscal budget to, you know, with whatever request it might be, knowing that we're going to get the best buy, best bang for our buck. So really appreciate all of the care and consideration that went to putting this budget together. And if, do any, does anyone else have any other questions? Excellent. Well, really appreciate you taking the time to come here, and I hope you get well soon.
Yes, thank you, and I apologize for the voice.
No worries.
All right, thank you very much.
And moving on from technology, we will be transportation next. Good evening.
Correct. And so Steve and MJ will probably just go right through transportation facilities and capital improvement, since they do all three, all right? So we'll just kind of move forward with those pieces.
Yep. So just to echo, we'll go right from transportation to facilities and grounds to the capital improvement plan. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So welcome to Steve and MJ. Steve is our director of operations, as you well know, does a fabulous job. And MJ is the, the power behind the scenes. And so, you know, MJ keeps, literally keeps things moving in our district, so we're appreciative for all her hard work as well.
Good evening and welcome.
And unfortunately, Derek DiPaolo could not be here tonight. He is stricken ill with Julio's illness times 10. And so, you know, he sends his regrets, but certainly, if there are things that we can't answer specifically, we can get those answers for you after we consult with Derek if there's a specific question.
Well, we wish him well and hope he gets well soon as well.
Good evening. I'm not sick yet. I don't think. So in transportation, there were very few increases. It was pretty much level-funded at this point. There was one increase in the line of diesel fuel, the regular Ed, of $3,634, and that just made that account where it's been in the past. Beyond that, if you have any questions, is probably the best way to handle it, because it's not a lot in here, it's just fuel and operation stuff.
Right. Remember, historically, we've had some changes to our transportation. So this, you know, over the last year or two, they've done a really nice job of kind of recovering post-COVID and consolidating those changes. We changed our start time, and we went from, remember, three bus runs to two bus runs. I think one of the ongoing challenges for transportation is the increased number of specialized runs that they need to do. And so because of the nature of the educational landscape in Rhode Island, there is much more school choice than there used to be, and the districts are obligated to transport. And so we do have, while we take in far more students than leave our district, you know, we do still have students that have specialized needs, and they may need specialized transportation for an out-of-district placement due to, for special education. We also have students that either attend Cheraho or North Kingstown or charter schools, and we are obligated to transport those students. So, you know, there are at least six, yep. Yep.
So I can, I have the numbers. So, so basically, we have 10 full-size buses running. We have seven out-of-district special education runs, and we have seven out-of-district regular education runs. That's, that's like Quest School on Senior Clock, Proud. So there's, you know, there's quite a few runs that we do daily.
And so one of the things to, that I am thankful for is that we do have the resources within the district, and, you know, we've committed to having our own transportation. We're one of the few districts left in the state that has our own transportation. And when I am at state, kind of statewide meetings or kind of meeting with other superintendents, one of the challenges that they face are, you know, soaring transportation costs well beyond the bounds of reason that are charged to them because of the infrastructure of kind of contracted transportation services for their districts. We don't have that liability, and so that is one of the things, long-term, I think that has contributed to the financial health of the district. And by no means, you know, am I saying that transportation is, is cheap, but it is more cost-effective right now for our district to have our own transportation and to be able to manage things in the way that is the most efficient than relying on an outside vendor that's doing it in a, in a for-profit way.
I have some interesting facts. So we did about a quarter million miles last year, 10,337 hours of equipment running, approximately 12,600 miles per vehicle. These are all averages, and the total number of 23,596 runs. It's a, it's a busy system for a small system.
And how are we doing with drivers?
We are up to par for the first time in a very long time.
Great to hear.
Thank goodness.
Yes.
Any questions on transportation?
Just one on the minibus. I noticed it's been a little while, or according to what I have in front of me. When is the last time, do you know, that we purchased a minibus? And how long? And what are we planning?
It's been about three years. You'll see in the capital budget. I have one, I'm requesting one, because it takes about two years, a year and a half. By the time you order to get it through the process, and our budget process is, it's about a year and a half to two years to get it.
Sorry, I jumped the gun, you know. I know, I figured, I saw transportation, this is transportation.
That makes sense.
It's just a matter of when we talk about it.
So unfortunately, Alex, one of, what I will add is that the, the, the cost of the buses has increased dramatically over time. And so in the, in the current climate, not only is there a, over a year wait time to get a bus, but the, the price has increased 25 to 30%. And so, and we anticipate that those prices will hold steady or, quite honestly, increase rather than go down. And so because of that, you know, Steve and Derek are anticipating our needs. We don't want to have to make an emergency purchase, and so by budgeting for it through the capital, we are able to find the best price, get it at the lowest rate that we can, because we're not in a, a time crunch to get it into service. Although it will be coming, what we anticipate is some of our minibuses will be reaching end of life within the next 18 to 24 months. So ordering that now will help us kind of stay on the right timeline.
When the, when the new graduation requirement for students doing so many hours of work kicks in, is that going to be more of a responsibility? Or are they responsible for their own transportation to wherever they're working?
I wouldn't know the answer to that.
So that's a great question. We do a lot of the work-based hours, you know, certainly for their freshman and sophomore years. We either provide transportation or it's through like the FFA or our computer technology club, robotics, for example. And so that's kind of a mix of both school and private transportation. When students start on. When students start on, um, you know, internships or that type of thing as a, as a senior, typically, we are anticipating that will be, uh, their own transportation. Where that could become a challenge is that if it is a school requirement and they have no way to get there, or would we be obligated to provide transportation? We'll explore that. My hunch is probably. But we will, we're not there yet, so we will, um, kind of figure that out as we go.
Next, move on. All right. This will be the, uh, facilities operations budget. In the elementary school, um, there's just some, um, minor increases. One is maintenance and repair. It is a PM service for the gym dividers. As they get older, they get more costly to maintain, so the service contract increased by $1,800. Glass has gotten expensive, so we've increased that line as well. And just general increases in cost of materials. We increased paint and, uh, furniture for classrooms. Please feel free to stop me if you have questions. At the middle school, um, it's, uh, you know, replacement of furniture in, uh, bit breaks during the year in classrooms. Again, same, same items, window, glass, paint, and, um, fire alarm services have increased across the district as well.
Steve, I'm just going to interrupt for one second. So if you go to tab six in your binders, all right, that's what Steve is referring to. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, no worries.
There we go. And I can kind of pass this back. We, we really worked hard to try to keep it pretty level in the funding. Okay. Um, at the high school, furniture again, just, uh, you know, that's repair and placement of failed equipment. Minor increase in kitchen repairs. Food service repairs as well, alarm, maintenance and repair for the gym divider. And, uh, you know, the cleaning of the air system and the filters in the new auditorium system was a big increase. It's quite the system and there's, uh, a tremendous amount of work and filters in it that need to be done. So that was, uh, that was the big items of increase in the budget.
Again, one of the, um, one of the things I'll emphasize is that this regular maintenance and repair is, is critical for us to be able to avoid, you know, major long-term costs. And so, you know, we have not had to, um, kind of invest in kind of significant repair of infrastructure because we keep up with our preventive maintenance. And so while, you know, these costs do add up without a doubt, if we don't do them, the long-term cost is, is much more. It's like fixing a hole in your roof, right? If you don't fix the hole in your roof, it becomes a, really a much more major issue. And so, um, so that's what these costs are related to, is that, you know, that kind of regular maintenance and repair.
I, I will also let you know that, that we do often have some emergency repairs that happen as the equipment that is outdoor on roofs and there again, it ages. They're all repairable, but it was not an approach that time where, where components, um, like intake air dampers, they're expensive and they need to be replaced because they're starting to corrode because of the salt air. The cabinets are holding up and they're fine, but it's the materials on the inside that when water gets on the surfaces, it starts to corrode them.
Steve, have we basically finished the Jacobs recommendations?
That we should be finishing out next, the end of next year with all the minor ones, the, the number threes.
And Diane, we will, believe it or not, we're at that five-year window where we will start that process again of kind of going and, and working with pride and, uh, kind of doing a facility study and identifying what our next, um, kind of next five years of facilities upkeep and, um, design looks like. And so that process will be going to go.
Any other questions? So I'll move on to our capital plan. Um, you see it's up on the screen here and you probably have it in front of you as well. So in, within the district, uh, this is phase two of the communication system. Last year we did wiring, as you know, and wired all the facilities. And, um, this is phase two where this is the actual equipment and, uh, clocks, notification system within this, the district. We're currently, we had a pre-bid today for, for this project, so, um, that's the district project. That's in every facility, including central office. NES, we're going to resurface the, um, asphalted play area, um, with, uh, some four-square, some different games, different type of surface that's, uh, a little more soft-sided. NPS, um, is, uh, the middle school. We're going to do, uh, two more, uh, learning lab upgrades. That's, uh, one, one is math, um, in the fifth grade area. And the other is going to be a learning lab similar to the two that we did this past year.
And so one of these, and I'll just kind of, uh, hint ahead at a piece. So one of the, um, things we were able to do, so since our last meeting, Carol, uh, Karen has done a great job working with the vendor for the copiers. And so we had originally had in our, um, first draft of the capital improvement plan, uh, purchase of copiers because they had come, we had come to the end of the lease and it was not reasonable to sign a new lease. Karen was very persuasive and was able to extend our lease at an excellent rate. And so, um, we were able to kind of push off the, the, the purchase of those copiers. What the committee had asked for us to consider was how would we include the, um, the money for the, uh, high school, kind of quote-unquote Zen Den or the, uh, mental health space? And so when we looked at it, we did not decrease the total amount for the capital plan right now. What we did do was move some money over from that original copier line into the lines to be able to do the, the learning labs and/or the mental health space. And so we allocated some money that had formerly been going to the copiers, some to each school to redo classrooms, both for the, um, for those learning labs, like we have the, um, middle school, for redoing some of our mathematics rooms, so that they're more in line with some of the, uh, pedagogy from building thinking classrooms, so giving them some more space to do that. And also to allow for the high school to be able to do, um, their mental health space for students.
Thank you, Karen.
Also, also at the peer school, um, we're going to do, uh, some ADA upgrades to toilet rooms. That's currently in design. And moving on to the high school, um, ceiling tile replacement, just from old tiles to modernize the building a little bit, make it look a little brighter inside. You know, it looks good now, but we're going to, the ceiling tiles will make a big difference. Renovation of the parking lot in the front and making some more parking spaces out there. If you've ever been around the high school during the day, it's quite difficult. This is a phase two project, so that's also in design. And that should be going to bid in the next two weeks. And then some storage facilities for the CTE program and drama, which basically are, are basically overhead garage stall little buildings that are going to be outside between the high school and the peer school and the dirt area. We're going to pour pat, pour pat and put, uh, some units out there. And then transportation is a minibus, just as, as the function of transportation. That minibus is a lift bus, um, so that, that's kind of important because our lift, uh, wheelchair, wheelchair lift buses are, are aging right now. And that's what I have.
Is the furniture for the learning labs, is that some sort of specialized furniture as opposed to regular classroom furniture?
Um, yeah, we've, we've, we've done some unique furniture and, uh, it's.
So Steve's done a great job with it, um, and he's worked really closely with the principals. And so this is really more, uh, furniture that is designed, kind of the next generation of what off it or what classroom furniture might look like. So for example, uh, desks that are whiteboards on the top that you can just write right on the desk and erase it. You know, kind of, uh, chairs that allow a little bit more movement, a little more wiggle for kids that are a little more wiggly. You know, more, uh, kind of high-top tables for students to be able to collaborate and work together. And so Steve has done a really nice job of kind of designing those pieces. Unfortunately, it, the expense of some of these items i- is surprisingly high. And so, you know, we're kind of doing it in small chunks and kind of re-refurbishing some of the rooms so that it's a more modern learning environment. And what we've done is make them into labs so that we don't have to do every classroom in that way. But if a student, if a, um, a class is doing a more specialized lesson or something where the, the teaching plan is more conducive to an area with a little more collaboration, a little more creativity, we have those labs that are in there for, uh, teachers to sign out. And I will say they're getting used every day. And so I think it's really a great investment. And long-term, uh, we're also investing very deeply in, you know, thinking hard about our math pedagogy. You know, we're starting to see the outcomes of approaching math differently. One of those ways that we're doing that is kind of reconfiguring our math classrooms. So there's more, uh, workspace, more whiteboards, more, uh, areas for students to collaborate and to, um, really go do some deeper thinking about mathematics. And again, that requires some investment and some redesign. Steve and his crew do a lot of the work themselves, so we don't, um, have the cost of having a contractor come in and do that piece. And so while the, um, the cost might look like, uh, a bit much on here, it would be two to three times as expensive as, if we contracted it out. So some of this is just for the materials and we do the work ourselves.
And I would urge everybody to come take a look at the learning labs. They're, they're definitely different and the way they use them is, is progressive, I feel.
I just had a question about the parking lots. I noticed that, and again, remind me. I believe it's this, it's an identical expense to what we have had this year. Is it just like an additional?
We split it up.
Okay.
We split the projects up into multiple phases to somewhat manage the budget, but also manage the flow of traffic during the summer because we still use the building. So, so if you shut the whole thing down.
Yeah, makes sense.
Difficult.
Very smart. And then the ceiling tiles, is, is there a particular way you go about selecting a particular design or is it just upkeep?
It's just upkeep. We're going to use a little different ceiling tile, um, that's more modern. And, and a cleaner look. The old style hold dirt more.
Yeah.
They're called Fisher ceiling tiles. We're going to use a non-Fisher or a fine Fisher one, so they don't hold the dirt.
Nice cleaner look and I'd assume also a healthier overall experience.
And they're fire-rated and, and they meet all the standards.
And the minibus, really great to hear that it's a lift bus, especially with the way expenses are going through the roof. I think this is a very proactive approach, uh, to get this going early. Is there any particular, um, use for the minibus that we're planning on using it for? Like, is it going to be used for, uh, regular routes?
It'll be our home-to-school route. It'll replace one of our older ones that's currently doing that. My, my anticipation is by the time the new one comes in, that minibus will be at the end of its service life, so we'll put it out on surplus.
Excellent.
So we don't get any sort of trade-in on the replacement?
We don't trade on, they don't take trade on that because they're so far, we, we, we've put so many miles on them. We've, you know, we've, uh, we've worked them to their end of, of realistic service life. You wouldn't want to. You can send it to surplus to another community or, or something like that. But by the time they, they're ready to come out of service, they've, they've done their job.
I'd also point out that this is also the lowest of capital improvement, uh, total over the last four years. So I know that's just the way, you know, you guys have really planned really well here and have, you know, thought everything out fiscally. So really appreciate it and, um, I'd just ask if anyone else on the committee has any other questions?
I do, about the learning, uh, labs and the furniture. So currently, what do we have there right now? How many students can be learning in a learning lab, um, at, at each school? How many students, um, how many classes can be learning simultaneously in that kind of a space?
So when we set them up, it's designed basically for 25, maximum of 25 students. There's two labs that do that. They're capable of doing that. They sign the labs out per class when they want to use them. So there's a schedule for when the rooms are used.
Is this for each school? There's two labs for each school?
So right now there are two labs at the middle school. The elementary school is exploring, kind of setting up a lab there. And the high school, that, they are not necessarily doing a learning lab. That money is going more to refurbishing some of the math classrooms, for building thinking classrooms, and for the, um, mental health space that Chris mentioned at, uh, his presentation.
Do you have a space currently for NES?
I will have to consult with Lisa. I know she has mentioned having a space, but I don't know specifically which one it is.
So possibly if there is no space, then that, um, $40,000 might not need to be implemented for furniture this year?
It is possible. Um, what I would say is that the elementary school is also investing in, um, really rethinking some of their configurations around mathematics instruction. And so they would like to, for example, implement, um, more whiteboard space, have some more equipment for kind of deeper mathematics instruction with the building thinking classrooms approach. And while those are one-time costs, once they're set up, they're there, uh, there is some initial investment with that.
Okay. So, I have.
Any other questions? Well, I just want to give a special shout-out and thanks to the capital improvement plan committee and everyone involved, uh, with putting this budget together. And thank you for your presentation thoroughness and walking us through all of this.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too. And then next on the agenda would be the fund balance and town appropriation request.
Okay, great. So I can talk through that just a little bit. First, I thought it might be, um, worthwhile, what you have in the papers that we gave for you today is at the top, it is entitled budget request from first workshop. And so I wanted to go over the requests from the last workshop and how we might accommodate those if the committee would like us to do so. So the first we've just gone over, which is the furniture. And so as I mentioned, um, Karen kind of renegotiating the, the lease on the copiers has freed up some space within the proposed, uh, capital budget to kind of fund the, that, um, equipment and that furniture for the mental health space. As Karen and I were talking about it, we, um, had not put a lot in for, um, additional, uh, learning lab space. And so since that money was there and it, uh, we thought it would be fair to the other schools to give, um, you know, reasonable proportions of that money to implement their learning labs, like the high school is going to do their, uh, mental health space. The second thing that you all asked us about was hockey practice time. And so as we kind of examined it and we worked closely with, um, Chris and with. And so as we kind of examined it and we worked closely with Chris and with Matt Marr, Athletic Director, and I want to thank them both for their really quick research and, and support in doing this. You know, we determined that the Narragansett share of three quote unquote sheets of ice time, so three practices a week of three for boys and three for girls, so six sheets total, is approximately $12,000. We had already allocated $5,000 for that. That was already in the budget. And so when Karen and I kind of looked at our enrollment projections, we recently were updated that a student may be returning to Narragansett from an outplacement. So we thought that it would be reasonable to kind of shift over from out of district tuition, the additional $7,000 it would cost to fully fund three sheets of practice time per team for the year. And that's not covering the whole cost. And so that's covering the Narragansett share. So Narragansett parents would not have to contribute extra. I cannot speak for what would happen in other districts, but that would cover for our athletes in those programs. And then finally, for the writing interventionist, again, you know, kind of the budget starts to come together a little more tightly at this time of year. So we have started the scheduling process at the high school over the last week since, since our last meeting. And so based on course requests, you know, we believe that there is room in our salary, in our salary line to transfer the amount of funding we would need for a writing interventionist because we have several teachers at the high school level that can kind of go across departments to pick up some extra sections. So for example, you know, several of our agri-science teachers are also certified in science. Some of our social studies teachers will be teaching, you know, different electives, those types of things. And so we think we can free up the equivalent of a 101 FTE to be able to cover a pilot, and I would like to emphasize pilot, of a writing interventionist for a year to see if it has an effect on the scores. We do know it's for some students. It's a relative weakness. And, you know, I have asked Lisa and Colleen to identify the, and begin researching the writing program that they would like to use for intervention to work with students. And they are consulting with some other districts to come up with that. And so again, should the committee wish, we can work it into the budget without, right now, an increase to our proposed budget.
Well, I just want to thank you, Pete and Karen, for digging into these special requests from each of our principals and special services. And to reiterate the bullet points for all three of these that you've, you know, made clear to us, there would be no increase to the total budget. So, you know, really impressive that there were asks from all three schools and special services and that you were able to finagle some numbers and make it work so that there would be no increase to the total ask. So bravo, very impressive and I'm pleasantly surprised. And to reiterate the hockey practice time, I know that was a request that came up at a previous school committee meeting as well, that we are going to do everything we can to support the program, but that does not cover the entire cost of renting the ice, the costs for, you know, the entire hockey program, that it will be the responsibility of other districts to chip in their fair share as well, correct?
Correct. And so as a co-op, you know, the cost is split. Narragansett, if you approve this, is covering the, the cost for our student athletes. And, you know, the other members of the co-op can choose to cover that or choose to have their parents fundraise. You know, I do, my understanding is most districts are feeling like they want to cover as much of it as is possible within their budget.
Last budget meeting, there was an ask for a .5 behavior specialist?
That was already in the budget.
Okay.
And so that is covered.
Curious as to, so all of the ice time for the hockey teams would be covered by the school?
Correct.
Okay. Just moving forward, you know, sports is really, it's, it's not, it's an outlier in the budget in which many of us approach sports as part of the education as an extra. However, by Rhode Island state law, we are supposed to approach sports not as a pay-to-play. So moving forward, you know, next year specifically, I do think it would be important for us equity-wise to look at the numbers just a little more deeply and see, you know, what students are playing what sports, how much money per student is it for that, for those sports. I do think we're going to start to see more conversations in the sports line as our numbers start to decrease. And I just think it's super important that we keep equity in mind as we do with education, that we do with sports. So I'm glad, I'm glad that the hockey parents, you know, spoke, we had a hockey student speak. I think it's really important for us to just kind of keep that as, as we move forward in our mind that, you know, equity is very important.
And I, and I do want to emphasize it has never been pay-to-play. These were for extra practice times. We were providing two, they wanted three. And so, and we're happy to provide that. And, you know, couldn't agree more. And again, speaking as the, the parent of two longtime athletes who are now college athletes, could not agree more. We have a great athletic department. We've had some wonderful success, right? And so I appreciate that focus on making sure that as many kids as possible are able to access our programs.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're definitely ahead of the game. And as Alex said earlier, you know, looking at all of the asks, I definitely wasn't thinking that we were going to come and have it already figured out for us. So, I mean, we're, you know, we're very blessed to be in the community that we are and to have the forward thinking from everybody on the administration. I think that's a huge plus for our town and for our students and for our families. So thank you for that. I, I did look ahead though to how this will affect the fund balance. So as we get forward, I do have a question about that.
Sure. So I can, if there's no other questions about those pieces?
I feel like as we continue, if any questions come up, anyone on the committee can just ask.
Sure. So, you know, one of the things that I'll remind the committee of is that there's a town council resolution that, you know, essentially asks us to hold 3% of our fund balance and use it for capital improvements, right? Take 2% of the fund balance and hold it in reserve for emergencies and then apply the rest of it to our operating budget, right? And that, again, over time, is something that we have complied with fully. If you kind of did the calculations, that is what's happening in this budget this year. And so what you do have within your sheets is just a breakdown of the fund balance over two years. And what you will see within that, if I can find it in my pile of papers here, is that, you know, this year, right, we are using, you know, approximately half of the available fund balance, both for capital and for operating. For next year, in the 2425 budget, we're using 1.1 million for the capital improvement. That's the asset protection. 3.4 million is going towards the operating budget. 750,000 is being used for the emergency reserve fund. And that then totals the total available fund balance, okay? So the fund balance is being totally applied, fully applied. There's not being anything kind of quote unquote held back beyond what is recommended by the town council through their resolution. Any questions about that?
So next year is a negotiation year?
Excuse me?
Is next year a negotiation year?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, moving forward, wearing many hats in education, I do think that we have to be very careful with our operating fund balance as, you know, teachers are the front line for our education. And going into a contract year where there will be negotiations, I would like to know that there's wiggle room to negotiate, especially to be in support of our teachers and staff. That's, this is, this is, my comment comes from, you know, at a high level, not specifically, you know, in detail or anything, but just looking forward, I do think it's really important that we keep that in mind, that next year is a negotiating year. And, you know, our teachers deserve to be looked at, you know, their salaries increases with, with fairness, especially with the kind of job that they've, that they endure right now and that they've endured and didn't ask for in the past few years. So I would just like to customarily, you know, be looking at and just making sure that, you know, not that we can foresee anything emergency-wise that's going to happen, but maybe calculating, thinking with forward thinking, if that makes sense. I haven't been part of the negotiation. This is my first term here, but for those of you who have been part of the negotiation, I would think that you probably look at the fund balance a little bit differently coming into negotiation year.
And, you know, so just to be clear, the, so the negotiations that we would do next year are for the following fiscal year. They wouldn't affect the fund balance from this budget, but absolutely, we do try to keep that in mind because when we do go into negotiations, again, we have an excellent faculty and staff. You know, we want to make sure that we're keeping the best people that we possibly can, while at the same time being kind of cognizant of being responsible for the community. And so, you know, we will keep that in mind when we go into next year's budget design. Right now, you know, this year's budget does follow the resolution of the town council and we'll continue to do that, keeping in mind all the things that you mentioned.
So does anyone have any other questions or comments for Pete?
So Alex, I can just go over really quickly again for the committee how the budget will be funded?
Sure.
Okay. And so again, you know, as I indicated in my kind of presentation to you at the last school committee meeting, you know, we are about 80% funded from our town appropriation, about 8% from state dollars, about 8% from federal dollars, and then about 4% miscellaneous. And so, you know, that 80% from town dollars is the bulk of what we do. And so right now, what we're looking at is an overall increase of 2% in the budget as designed. And so again, that is well below the rate of inflation. We think that's a really responsible budget coming in. You know, what does that entail? That entails a slight cut in state aid, right? So we're going to lose about $60,000 in state aid. We are going to be increasing, you know, our use of fund balance for operating a bit. And so that will be going up. You know, we do anticipate slightly more tuitions. And we are going to be, again, should the, should the committee approve the budget, we will be going for a town appropriation of an increase of 2.74%, right? And so that would be, you know, 767,471 dollar increase. But again, that is below 3%, below the rate of inflation. And so we do think that that is responsible, given the conditions of the loss of COVID-era funding, the decrease in state aid and a continued kind of demand for services from students who are really are, continue to be in dire need. You know, I, I wish I could say, you know, COVID is in our rearview mirror. It is to a degree, but the effects do linger for some of our students who require some more intensive interventions. And so we continue to support those students. The way that you support students in education is, you know, is with time and effort and that comes from people. And so that's one of the things that we continue to have a focus for what we're doing. So again, I think the headline is that it's an overall increase of slightly over 2%, which, once again, I think, given the economic conditions that we're facing, you know, in this area, really is taking into account, A, some slight loss of students. So we are kind of pruning staff when we need to. You know, again, we're trying to do it through people who are either kind of retiring or maybe leaving Narragansett for other reasons because we have a lot of faith in our faculty and in our staff. We think they do a great job. And then two, also being cost contained where we can. You heard Steve, you know, the transportation budget is basically flat. You know, lots of other areas, we are basically flat. But we do want to continue to invest in our preventive maintenance and making sure that we are being as innovative as we can be while also being fiscally responsible.
Well, I just want to thank you again for walking us through that. And, you know, I think that's a big ask is, you know, just how the budget will be funded. You know, it comes up all the time and it's our favorite question to answer. And, you know, to hear that, you know, the reduction in state aid and all of these other variables have been taken into consideration, to know that we're being fiscally responsible, but not at the expense for providing an equitable access to high-quality education, high-quality teachers and high-quality resources to our students, you know, is super important, especially moving forward and being as proactive as possible. So again, thank you for all that you're doing and for walking us through all that. Does anyone else on the committee have any other questions regarding how the budget will be funded? And is there anything else that you wanted to go over on that item?
Nope, I think that covers it. So what, what will happen next is, you know, the committee will have an opportunity to vote on approving the budget that will go forward to the town at our next meeting. And so right now, what I am hearing is consensus from the committee that Karen and I will go forward with funding the budget as you see it laid out in front of you here, right? You will have the opportunity to vote on that at our next meeting. If between now and then, you all have specific questions on any element of the budget, we are happy to answer those. For our public watching, all of these documents will be posted on our website, so they're easily accessible to everyone. So the presentations, the detailed budget, kind of all those things, you know, once we get through the workshops, we will post those all up for people to look at and they can, you know, fully transparent and people can take a look at whatever parts of it that they want to. If people, constituents have questions about specific areas of the budget, they're always free to reach out to me and I'm happy to answer any questions that people have.
I'm sorry, one, one thing that came to mind that I, I made a note that the last time I was here, we, we had an at-length conversation about attendance a couple of meetings ago. Can you remind me, do we have a full-time truancy officer?
We do not. So we have, so Rebecca, who is our school social worker, also kind of does the truancy work. And the reason for that is that nine times out of 10, we find that when students are not coming to school, there is usually some mitigating factors that fall into the realm of social work for supports to get students to school. And so for such a small district, we cover a lot of our mental health needs, as you well know, with school psychologists. And so Rebecca's work, Rebecca Angel, her work really falls into working with families and supporting them, often in outside of school issues, in order to get students into school. And so Rebecca does do those pieces. We do sometimes contract with investigators if we're having, you know, a real hard time with either residency or some other pieces, but the bulk of the work goes to Rebecca.
Do you feel as though, in addition to a part-time truancy officer, would help in aid in our attendance rates?
Right now, I think that the collaboration of Rebecca with the deans and the principals and the school psychologists, we have a pretty good handle on what students are doing. So for example, we do a quarterly analysis of every student in the school as a district. So we get all of the administrators and support staff together, kind of an early warning type of data dig to take a look at every individual student who has exceeded more than 10% of absences. And I will tell you that, every student that is identified are known, there are intervention plans in place, there are, the administrators and the support staff are able to talk at length about the student's history, about the family circumstances, about what's going on there. So, you know, I really kind of take that as an indicator of there aren't kids that are flowing, that are falling through the cracks. It's a really tough nut to crack for some families to get their kids to school. I'm not sure another person is going to make that change necessarily, right? Sometimes just their circumstances need to be adjusted.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any other questions before I ask for public comment? Now, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak? Seeing that there is none, I will make a motion to adjourn. Our next meeting will be held on March 20th at 7:00 PM here at the Town Hall. I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:13.
So moved.